Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Cepeda. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. We acknowledge you in all of our ways, and this morning we pray a very special prayer for everyone that was affected by this recent catastrophic storm in Hillsborough County and throughout the state of Florida and all other states that have been affected. Many have lost property, damaged property, or lost businesses, and even worse, those that have lost loved ones. We ask you to comfort them and heal their hearts, and during this time of repairing and rebuilding, we pray that everyone will have a quick recovery and restoration that's better than before. And we thank you for all of our Hillsborough County employees that worked tirelessly throughout this storm, and we pray for the first responders also that were working in amazing ways that even when their own homes were flooding, were out rescuing others, and we pray a special prayer for them. And we also pray this morning for our September retirees, that in Head Start, William La Boye, Parks and Recreation, Dean May, and Public Utilities, James Gary Hunter. We pray that they will have a long and healthy life, and you fulfill their hearts' desires. And we pray for this meeting this morning in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. This morning, we have three special recognitions, and Commissioner Myers will present the first one.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to honor our Hillsborough County youth for their shining examples of how young people can lead the charges in addressing and eliminating bullying in our community. I would like to invite Dr. Ali Massif, the Chair of the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee, to join me at the podium and tell us more about the Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Dr. Massif? Now here, do we have someone can come up? And when you come up, will you state your name, please?
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking time for us for our Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee. We provide resources to parents and students, anti-bullying resources, and once a year, we're pleased to honor one recipient of our Anti-Bullying Award.
And your name?
Sorry, my name is Eva Dyer.
Thank you, Eva.
Well, let's show some love to Eva. She pitched in and got us through this. Okay, thank you so much, Eva. The Anti-Bullying Recognition Award goes to a young person or a group of young people up to age nineteen to highlight their amazing efforts to eliminate bullying. This year, we are recognizing a college freshman as our 2024 Anti-Bullying Recognition Award winner, Nicholas Nick DeCastro. Would Nick and his guests please join us at the pole, or join me at the podium? Come on up, Nick. Don't be shy. Handsome young man, get on up here. Your parents like to join? Okay, your parents are coming. Come on up. Okay. All right. Looking GQ this morning? Okay. Come on, don't be, come on up with your son. It's okay. We're just in the boardroom. We're just trying to get this done, that's all. Okay, so, welcome. Nick was nominated by the School Resource Officer, Anthony Bennett. While finishing his senior year at Steinburner High School, Nick became aware of a group of freshmen who were bullying other students on campus. Youth with disability and those from different cultures were among the targeted students. When Nick became aware of the bullying, he looked to the lead, he took the lead amongst a group of seniors and requested opportunities to do an intervention when it came to the young freshmen. Bullies, Officer Bennett and the teachers applaud and approve Nick's request. At the meeting, Officer Bennett allowed Nick and the other seniors a chance to speak and make an impact with the younger students. They did an excellent job in educating the others and providing examples of how to respect one another. Officer Bennett believes the seniors provide incredible leadership and that their interventions will go a long ways in keeping a more positive school environment at Steinburner. The bullying stopped as a result of Nick's leadership and actions. In addition, Nick also used the School Resource Officer, Office to mentor students as an individual, on an individual basis. Officer Bennett witnessed Nick providing encouragements to students to curb negative behavior. Nick attends Florida Gulf Coast University. His career goal is including, I'm sorry, his career goal includes pursuing professional sports photography or possible career in law enforcement. We could not be more prouder of Nick for being a role model by defending others from bullying and acting as a mentor in doing the right thing. He epitomizes the reason we are here today, to recognize youth leadership and their efforts to end bullying. We also are proud of his family, School Resource Officer Bennett, and the teachers of Steinburner High School, who supported this young man's vision as he lead by example and compassion. We are also proud of his accomplishments. It is an honor to present him with the 2024 Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Congratulations, Nick, and we appreciate your leadership, and thank you, and here's your award. Come on on this side, sort of photographer.
And I'd like for you to share a few words with the...
Absolutely. Okay, my notes. Good morning, everybody. I am truly honored to receive this award from Hillsborough County. Being part of the team that helps stop bullying at our school was deeply personal for me. I faced bullying in both middle school and high school for things I couldn't control, just like the kids that we helped out last year. My experience as a corporal with the Pasco Sheriff's Office as an explorer played a huge role in this act. It has gave me a sense of responsibility and the confidence to take action. When I saw what these, those kids were going through, I knew I had to step up. With the support of my fellow seniors, we were able to pull together and make something, and make sure the bullying stopped. Standing up to bullying isn't easy, but it's something all we need, we all need to do to create a safe environment for everyone. I hope our efforts inspire others to step in when they see something wrong. Thank you again, everybody.
The parents would like to share a few words? Would you like to say something? Okay, sure.
Good morning. I am very, very excited. Nicholas, congratulations. You are the, make the difference. The bullying is a very complicated problem, but interacing this problem is very important for our community. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Gracias.
And thank you. Now, I would like to recognize Elijah Ewing. Stay right, stay right up here. Hold on. From Windward Wealth Management. Mr. Ewing, who is a sponsor of the annual Anti-Bullying Recognition Award, has a special gift he would like to present, Mr. Ewing? Okay. Come on up and share a few words with, good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Good morning, everyone. It's an honor to be here again to help present this very special Anti-Bullying Award. My name's Elia Ewing. I'm a private wealth advisor and founding partner with Windward Wealth Management, which is a private wealth advisory practice of Ameriprise Financial. I'd be remiss if I didn't take just a second and give a heartfelt thank you to all of our first responders for once again putting our needs above their own and heading into the storm while the rest of us were all buckled down trying to stay out of it. Your sacrifices never fail to amaze me, so thank you very much. I appreciate the entire Board of County Commissioners for once again taking time to recognize the work of the thirteen-member Hillsborough County Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee, people that come from all over our county. This meeting of the minds wouldn't be nearly as effective without the behind-the-scenes work of Eva Dyer, whose job title of project manager doesn't, you know, with the Criminal Justice and Grants Management Office, doesn't even begin to explain her efforts, so thank you, Eva. As a financial advisor, my daily work revolves around people's dreams and goals and many times the obstacles that pull us off course. Things like, there's a boat in my living room, I'm gonna need some money, and my daughter's house is underwater, and she, her boyfriend, three dogs, and two cats are moving back in. I'm gonna need some money, maybe for a full-time vacation. These life events all require a course correction, kind of like Google Maps, so I try to help guide people on a path towards success and security. What Mr. DeCastro here was able to accomplish was a course correction in the lives of some younger students, probably just trying to find their own footing in the world. This morning, we celebrate the courage it takes to protect what matters, whether it's someone's financial security, someone's dignity, or a sense of belonging. Coretta Scott King said, "It doesn't matter how strong your opinions are, if you don't use your power for positive change, you are indeed part of the problem." So, without further ado, it gives me a great pleasure to present this year's Anti-Bullying Award to Nicholas DeCastro. You've made an incredible impact in your school and in our community, and we're all very proud of you. Thank you so much for being part of the solution.
Thank you. Have it.
Thank you.
Here, come on around, Nick. Get him in the picture.
There we go, there we go. Thank you.
And hold on, we're gonna take, don't go so fast, young man. It's okay. Nick, thank you for all you do. As a freshman in college, continue to do the same. If you see someone being bullied on your college campus, please step in. Okay, so now we're gonna move to the back and take a photo. Come on back.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair. With the following individuals from the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit, please join me at the podium. Gina Justice, Court Administrator. Angie Smith, Chief Deputy Court Programs. Judy Royden, JDP Program Director. Anthony Lopez, Court Program Specialist III. Bertha Little, Administrative Assistant II. Carly Kowalski, Administrative Assistant II. Lanny Furman Valdez, Court Program Specialist II. Marielli Escalante Silvestre, Court Program Specialist II. Helena Hampton Davis, Court Program Specialist II. Good morning, and thank you for joining us today. Originally called Youth Justice Awareness Month, the special observance we're recognizing today began in 2008 when a grieving mother in Missouri sought meaningful justice system reform after her teenage son took his life while in an adult jail. In 2016, Youth Justice Awareness Month was renamed Youth Justice Action Month to encourage advocates, legislators, and governments to take concrete actions to show their commitment to youth justice. People across the nation, especially the distinguished guests from our community who are with us today, are working very hard to raise awareness, strengthen coalitions, and take steps to improve outcomes for our youth. It is my pleasure to recognize their efforts with this proclamation, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas October is recognized as Youth Justice Action Month, a time to advocate for and highlight effective, evidence-based interventions that ensure the well-being, safety, and rehabilitation of youth. And whereas the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit for Hillsborough County implemented the Juvenile Arbitration Program in October 1st, 1979, and whereas the program has undergone changes throughout the years to meet the needs of the community and is now known as the Juvenile Diversion Program, which provides case management for arbitration, teen court, pre-arrest delinquency citation, and truancy cases. And whereas the Juvenile Diversion Program offers a community-based alternative to formal court processing of eligible cases, and whereas the program's goal is to divert youth from progressive involvement in the criminal justice system and reduce recidivism by holding youth accountable, conducting risk assessments, delivering individualized sanctions, targeted case management, and connecting youth to community service providers. And whereas 1,863 youth were referred to the Juvenile Diversion Program last fiscal year, 100 youth were served in truancy court through a collaboration with the Hillsborough County School Board, and 450 youth volunteered as jurors in teen court. And whereas the Juvenile Diversion Program balances both the needs of the youth and the safety of the community, with the most recent Department of Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Accountability Report indicating youth who completed the Juvenile Diversion Program had a 2% recidivism rate. And whereas this year marks the 45th anniversary of the Juvenile Diversion Program, and it is essential that the unique needs of the youth in the justice system continue to be addressed, including access to education, mental health services, and rehabilitation programs. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 24th, 2024 as Youth Justice Action Month in Hillsborough County, and asks residents to recognize the hard work of juvenile diversion program personnel, community service providers, and law enforcement personnel, and thank them for their commitment to the success of juvenile diversion program participants and their unwavering service to our community awarded this second day of October, 2024."
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. No point. Thank you. Thank you. And would you like to say a word?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. How humbling it is to be here this morning, especially after the recent events. Hurricane Helene was not, was not very helpful in bringing us all good safety, but certainly the members of our community all leaned in. We have grown humble about the way by which we wrap our arms about one another and really strive, and I really appreciate the members of our community who are here today to include our law enforcement personnel and the members of the B O C C who led us through this so gracefully, so thank you for that. But back to the matter of the day, I'm here for the proclamation that we are so humbly receiving. I'm here to represent the Administrative Office of the Court, Chief Judge Christopher Sibella, Administrative Juvenile Judge Larry Lefler, and the members of our juvenile diversion team who are with us here today, and I'm so thankful that they could join us because really this is a representative, a representation of their work, the way by which they are able to impart change on youthful offenders in our community, and that they do so with a great bit of tact, skill, discipline, and heart. And for that, I'm so thankful for them and the way by which they represent me in every way, shape, or form every day. I also want to ensure that I am mindful of my remarks because youth in our community do deserve a second chance. Those youthful offenders who are brought to our juvenile diversion program need a way to avoid further harm by progressive involvement in our juvenile justice system, which can be so troubling and lead to so much more risk and harm in our community more broadly. So I thank you for all of your recognition today. I thank you for this humble award, which we will proudly hang in our office. Have a great day. Thank you again. Thank you so much. So much, I appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to say anything before we go?
Judy? I just want to say forty-five years is a long time. Our job is so important to us to keep kids from entering the juvenile justice system, and it's a matter of putting the right services at the right time and also provide accountability, and I thank my staff for being so dedicated. So thank you again, and I'd like to thank the County Commission.
Thank you, Jamie. So, let's go to the chairs. One, two, three.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the work you do. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm pleased to present this morning's third commendation to Film Tampa Bay, recognizing their 10th anniversary. I'd like to invite the folks from Film Tampa Bay to please come forward. Well, I'm pleased to recognize this amazing organization who, for the last decade, has done so much for the Hillsborough County film industry. Film Commissioner Tyler Martin Olich, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, and his dedicated staff have made significant accomplishments in solidifying our county's reputation as one of the top film centers in the nation. And it's an honor to present this commendation to Film Tampa Bay for its amazing work. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate Film Tampa Bay on the occasion of its 10th anniversary, a decade of enriching Hillsborough County's film industry and earning it a place among the top film destinations in Florida. Since its founding in 2013, Film Tampa Bay has provided invaluable services unique to the local film production industry. As a division of Visit Tampa Bay, the organization has played a crucial role enhancing the region's marketing and economic development, contributing to the county's prominence as a thriving film hub in Florida. In the last ten years alone, Hillsborough County has hosted over 4,000 productions, generating more than $100 million in direct economic impact. The industry's presence has also led to over 30,000 hotel room bookings by out-of-state professionals and created more than 26,000 job opportunities for local residents, fostering a robust crew base. Thanks to the Film Tampa Bay's commitment to professional excellence, over 1,400 county residents have pursued careers in film and digital media, with film production jobs offering the highest median annual wage in Florida at over $105,000. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Film Tampa Bay for ten years of strengthening the region's standing as a premier film center in the nation, and which is at many years of continued success, awarded the second day of October, And it's my pleasure to present this to you, and why don't you want to say a few words?
Sure. Should we do the photo first? Good morning, everybody. My name is Hillary Weber, and I'm the Production Manager for Film Tampa Bay. On behalf of our organization, thank you for your support of the film industry in Hillsborough County. It is an honor for Film Tampa Bay to be recognized here today. Film Tampa Bay keeps Hillsborough County on screen and scene, offering filmmaking resources that make our region one of the best filming destinations in Florida. In just ten years, under the leadership of Tyler Martin Olich, Film Tampa Bay has grown to be one of the top film marketing organizations in the Sunshine State, facilitating screen production and connecting and serving Hillsborough County's filmmaking community on a greater level. We want to express gratitude to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners for this honor, and a special thanks to Commissioner Ken Hagan for championing this study eleven years ago that led to the creation of Film Tampa Bay. To the entire Board of County Commissioners, as well as the dedicated county staff that we work with on a daily basis, thank you so much for supporting our diverse and vibrant film industry.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one off-the-agenda item. This is going to be Item C1 at 10:45. This is going to be to receive a briefing on Hurricane Helene. We have two items that are deferred to October 16th. The first one is A3, which is to approve an amendment to the Older Americans Contract to increase federal funding for additional seniors to receive grant-funded services. And Item A7 is to approve the Fiscal Year 25 Interlocal Agreement with Polk County for part-time services of an ornamental horticulture extension agent. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions by Commissioner Wostel. It is Item A2, which is to authorize affordable housing services to draft the substantial amendments to the action plans and to begin the public comment period beginning October 2nd for the thirty-day period through November 13th, and to set a public hearing on November 13th to receive additional public comments on the substantial amendments. We have several items for time certain. The first one is Item D1 at 10 o'clock. This is to conduct the first public hearing for the designation of a brownfield area at parcel 1308 North US Highway 41 in Ruskin. No board action is required at this time at this first public hearing. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to receive public input and discuss whether to arbitrate Tampa Bay Water's environmental resource permit applications for the South Hillsborough Pipeline Projects. Item B1 at 10:15 is to accept the 2025 Annual Audit Plan performed by the County Internal Auditor's Office. Item F1 at 10:30 is by Commissioner Hagan, this is for a board discussion on how best to address the vacancy of the position of County Internal Auditor due to the resignation of Ms. Peggy Caskey on September 5th, 2024. Item C1 at 10:45 is to receive a briefing on Hurricane Helene. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the changes. Second motion, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Kemp, please accord your vote.
Motion carried. Seven to zero.
Okay, the Board will go on the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from any citizen about your, any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. However, at the same time... However, at the same time, as requested when you speak to the Board, that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call each speaker in order in which the requests to speak have been received. Please state your name and speak clearly in the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. First three speakers are David Coleman, followed by Bradley Twanda, and then Humeira Absal. Good morning, Mr. Coleman.
Good morning. My name is Dave Coleman, and in the years past, I easily found the county number to talk to a human being for a shelter during an emergency, and I would post it around town. Hagan posted an incorrect number, so I inquired. One of you had me contacted by fire rescue at the command center. He gave me two wrong numbers. The next day, I was contacted again with the correct number, which I was able to share out with neighbors, elders, and the working poor with no cars, people that stay behind when people like from Avalos, Cheval, and Cowardwood leave town, which none of those areas lost power actually during this storm. One thing I discussed with the fire guy was how they were heroes after an event, but he agreed being proactive instead of reactive would be great. We talked about giving the number to the news. It never happened. Things we... Thing is, we don't have enough shelter space for the thousands that would need it in a direct hit, nor even for the people that you ordered from their homes. You told everybody in Hillsborough that lives in a trailer to evacuate, and then there's the 2,000 people in the pit count. So, where would you put them? We don't have enough shelters anyway. Cooling centers should have been immediately available, not days later. Plans to get kids to school in dry clothes on Monday should have been in place. There was a horrible story about somebody living down by the Alfire River in a trailer, and she sent her kids to school in wet shoes and had lost everything. It's... You're being reactive, not proactive. Things should have been in place. Are nonprofits still attached to you stealing when they help victims that lost so much? Are you going to inquire what happened at the Mosaic Plant that shut some of its production, and what was the damage at the facility at the port? What about the flooding at Tico? Your EPC told me right here in this room that they're monitoring a shifting toxic plume in our estuary. So, that area flooded. Did toxins get released? Are you going to look into it? Do you care? You finally gave a short report on the $2 billion savings account during the budget hearings. I want to know more. Seems we could easily switch to 20% and release like $40 million whenever we needed it. And where was the $180 million for affordable housing? The same question I've had for a past year. It seems like the... Your budget went from 600 down to 450 pages. I think it should be going up rather than down. I just learned... I stopped at the Portico before I come here, and I just learned that apparently DeSantis' plan to provide shelter doesn't exist. He did say that people can't go blow clean would be going to jail. In this count...
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
They're giving out tickets, and they're jailing people that are homeless.
Bradley Twanda, followed by Humeira Absal, and then Denise Herndon. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Twanda Bradley, and I'm the President of Progress Village Civic Council. And I come to you today because of MMI, one of the developers that are looking to build around us, we just have small concerns. Not concerned that they're doing it, but want to make sure that we're okay if you all approve what they are requesting. One of our major concerns is the flooding. Thank God we did not feel or experience flooding last week, but prior to that, we had two major flooding over two feet. Homes were damaged. And so, there are things here, thanks to Commissioner Myers, have put things in place. We do have a $10 million grant that we're working on the stormwater. However, if new things are built around us, we just want to make sure that that $10 million is good, or we're going to be taken care of if they are put in place. So, that's a concern. The other concern is density. We are very crowded in that area. We still welcome others, but we want to make sure that we can still get in and out of the village. We already have challenges, and we just don't want to increase that challenge, just make sure we're taken care of. We also have concern about safety. Our safety is because things... Again, Commissioner Myers has done a great job in giving us beautifying our parks, and our parks are being used more now, thank goodness. However, there's more traffic, more walking across. Parkers Village has two sides to it, has Unit 1, Unit 2, and Unit 3 is small. We walk across the Boulevard quite often to get to the new things. We walk across 78 to get to the new park. There's been a little bit. Emmanuel P. Johnson Center is there. Larry Sanders Complex is what we walk to. But it's not safe today. So, increased traffic, what are we going to do? We just want to make sure that we are covered. If the county approves that the development takes place, we welcome it, but we want to make sure that we are not encrouched in things and being built on and not built for the future. That is my concern, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Twanda. If you can get... I think I see Josh in the back. Josh, if you can speak to her on that $10 million on the project that we already have in place, I certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next three speakers, Humeira Absal, followed by Denise Herndon, and then Ellsworth Williams. Good morning, Ms. Absal.
Good morning, Humeira Absal. Back in May, you held a public hearing on changing the county ordinance to invest our taxpayer dollars in Israel bonds. Over 40 people came and opposed the change for two reasons. It's a bad investment, and it's morally reprehensible to invest in a country that is committing genocide. Only a handful of people spoke in favor of it, but you voted 6 to 1 to do it anyway. So, here's some updates for you regarding that poor decision. Israel bonds are now an even worse investment than they were back in May. Major credit agencies have continued to lower Israel's credit rating. Last week, Moody's Credit Agency downgraded Israel's rating another two notches. S&amp;P cut their rating just yesterday. They're soon to be junk bonds. There are lots of other very low-risk investments available with equal or better returns. Are you prepared for the negative impact on the county budget if Israel can't repay its debt? Now, let's look at why Israel's credit ratings are plummeting. Israel is still committing war crimes, is still committing crimes against humanity, and it is also extremely expensive. Here's some of the expensive things that Israel has been spending money on. Killing over 41,000 Palestinians, killing over 16,500 Palestinian children, burying another 10,000 people under the rubble, destroying or seriously damaging more than half of the homes in Gaza, bombing hospitals, displacing 1.9 million people, blocking humanitarian aid from entering Gaza, and starving Palestinians, killing over 115 journalists, paying for the propaganda campaign that portrays Israel as the victim instead of the oppressor, protecting Israeli settlers who were stealing land from Palestinians in the illegally occupied West Bank. The 335 bullets fired into the car that killed 60-year-old Hendra Jab, along with six of her family members and the two paramedics who tried to rescue her while she was on the phone pleading for help. These are the kinds of things that Israel's spending all their money on to wreck their economy. Committing crimes against humanity is very expensive. Illegal occupations of other people's lands are expensive. Committing war crimes is expensive, and instead of speaking out against what is happening, most of you want Hillsborough taxpayers to help pay for war crimes by buying Israel So, to recap, Israel bonds are a bad investment. Israel bonds help Israel raise funds to pay for their crimes against humanity. It's still morally reprehensible. Your constituents do not want you to make them complicit in genocide by investing in Israel bonds.
Thank you, Ms. Absal. Denise Herndon. Is Ms. Herndon here? And then the last speaker this morning is Ellsworth Williams.
It seems like I'm always the last speaker. Good morning, Chair, and the County Commissioner, and the Court, my fellow veterans, Josh, Commissioner Worsel, and Commissioner Sapeta. What I'm bringing here today is that we had our conference last month for our serving of elderly veterans, and it's something that's needed, and it should be nonpartisan. We all have families who are all demographics, as well as the particular parties, and I wanted to just give you some of the things that I've learned from this conference. First of all, and the purpose of the conference was to bring together all the resources together, the experts and the community together, and to discuss, make aware of the resources that are available for elderly veterans in our community. Of the people who attended our conference, the majority of them were from Hillsborough residents, and I want to make sure you heard what their voice. One of the voices that they mentioned was they felt forgotten, especially not as much as age, as much as the time period. So, if you were a veteran, like my dad during the Vietnam, you felt like you didn't get the attention that you needed, and you kind of forgotten. One of our guest speakers that we had for the panelists was actually a senior leader at the USF Vet Success, Dr. Renee Amboy. Her father's a 91-year-old veteran, and he is suffering from Alzheimer. And to hear her story about what she had to do to take care of her father was absolutely heartbreaking, and it's one of the lessons that I've learned. I know we all have limited resources, I understand that, and I'm just one of many that say we need to make sure we don't forget our veterans and their families. One of the things that Veterans Council Veterans have done to commit to that, we have committed that we will not forget them, and we are writing programs for them. We're going to start providing programs for them. But then, number one program is advocacy, and that's why I'm here. I'm already putting out emails, trying to get some of our legislators together and see what we can do. At a minimum, we should at least be able to provide resources that are available to our community when it comes to stuff like... And we don't even know the effects of TBI when it comes to the Vietnam veterans. That was not discussed or even talked about back then, and here they are, 88 years old, and you have TBI, and no one's even talked about it. So, we need to do more, and we need to include the whole entire community, the whole village, and that's what I'm here for. So, you'll see me again in the coming months because I need... I found another passion, and I've taken care of elderly veterans, and I hope to get some of your support in the coming months. Thank you very much, and I'll see you on Veterans Day.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right, that closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent? A motion by Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers, approve the consent agenda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven to zero.
Bonnie, first item.
Thank you. We have a little bit of time before 10 o'clock, so we could take our first regular item. This is Item B2. This is to provide a non-binding letter of intent between the county and the University Area Community Development Corporation, and Ron Barton will take us through this item.
Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners, Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. As Bonnie said, this is B2. It's a non-binding letter of intent between the county and UACDC, University Area Community Development Corporation. Also have with us today Sarah Combs, CEO of the UACDC, and Sarah and I have spent a lot of time the last two months putting this LOI together, and so I'm glad she's here with us. And I'll say right up at the beginning, her executive committee's approved this LOI, and she signed it. And so, it is a good faith effort on both parties to move forward. A reminder, very simply, this was a request to look at the opportunity of having the county's parks and recreation take over the, what is now the Victor Chris Community Center Complex, lots of Cs. And one of the major requirements to achieve that is basically to terminate the current lease. That current lease, I'll remind you, is for 15 more years with renewals that take it another 10. So, it was important that we take an approach with Sarah and the UACDC that frankly, I use the word frequently, no harm. So, whatever we did, we tried to minimize or mitigate the impacts to UACDC and programming, their organization financially, but we also needed an exit strategy so that both parties would agree to terminate the lease. And so, what you have before you is the product of our negotiations between Sarah and I, and we think it's a fair business approach. It's not the final agreement. If we get your approval today, then we will go back quickly and prepare the actual legal agreements to effectuate these business terms, also terminate the lease, and it would basically result in Parks and Rec assuming operations of the county-owned facility January 1st of '25. So, brief summary, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Ron.
Good morning.
Just want to thank you, John Mueller, and Rick Vadaas for working on this project. But this agenda item is a win-win for our county. It brings the Victor Chris Community Center in line with all of our other parks and recreations. So, therefore, I move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion to approve Commissioner Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cohen. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Please record your vote on B2.
Motion carried. Seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next, Chair.
Sorry. Next item is Item B3. This is to approve a concept of the offer for the use of 13.15-acre portion of the county-owned property in Progress Village for stormwater and floodplain management easement, and we have a power team here of Greg Horwiddell, John Mueller, and Josh Bellotti.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. For the record, my name's Greg Horwiddell. I'm Deputy County Administrator, and we have our team available. We're talking this morning about a concept that's been presented to us to turn a piece of county property that's underutilized and leverage that into a number of community benefits. We would like the Board's approval to move forward with negotiations to bring back something to the Board that has much more specificity and detail in it, and frankly, would be binding not just on the developer, but also the county. With that very brief introduction, I'll turn it over to John Mueller because he has a lot of detail that he will share about this project. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Mueller, Director for Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. I have just a few slides to show you. Commissioner Hagan, I know, be brief, which are highlights of what was presented to you in the background of this agenda item. The subject site in question is located directly near Progress Village Park. If you could put up the first slide, please. Next slide. It's about 3/4 of a mile directly east from the intersection of 301 and I-75. The county's Progress Village Drainage Improvement Project is actually going on on our 40 acres right now. That's a $16 million ARP-funded project due to be completed next year. It's utilizing about 27 acres, leaving 13.15 acres available for additional or surplus stormwater and flood mitigation use. Now, MMI, the proposer, is the adjacent owner of approximately 40 acres. I'll note that in the immediate vicinity of this area, Progress Village Park, Larry Sanders Sports Complex, Simmons Bauer Park, Emmanuel P. Johnson Rec Center, Lamb Elementary, Progress Village Middle School, Progress Village Christian Academy. I note them because collectively, the opportunity as presented by MMI includes creating a sense of place for Progress Village through connective trails and signage. Next slide, please. MMI presented an example, taken from Lucy Dell Park, of what the vision could be for their stormwater use. As you can see, there is some connective trails through it as well. They also noted in their proposal the potential to add 12 acres of land directly connected to our Progress Village Park, which is a potential expansion opportunity. Next slide, please. Lastly, I'll share some key points that we would consider in any notice offer. Our intent would be a property right in the form of an easement, and we must also ensure guarantees on performance of the improvements and future maintenance obligations. There are other aspects we're looking for, but I wanted to highlight those. Lastly, as Greg said, I'll note again, your consideration today is not for approval of MMI's offer. Today's request is to authorize us to advertise and notice a proposal with certain terms and conditions. We'll look at all the responses, and we'll return any that we feel are appropriate with a final recommendation. And with that, I'll stop there. Myself, Greg, and Josh Bellotti on the stormwater side are here for any additional questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers.
Oh, I thought Josh was going to speak. You're not going to?
He can. He can.
Okay. Okay, good morning. What a team. I'd just like to share with us, on August 13th, we had a meeting down in Progress I'd just like to share with us, on August 13th, we had a meeting down in Progress Village, and we met with the residents regarding this project MMI developed. I see Jake Kramer's here. He represented Stern Weaver. This was a win-win. The residents of Progress Village had submitted proposals, some of the things that they wanted the developer to do, and all was based on this being approved today to move forward to advertise and all. So therefore, I move for approval on this particular project.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bradley, for coming and your dedication to your community. I am in no way going to support this item, because I took a private meeting with this organization believing that something that I had dealt with over a year ago that had disappeared was being worked on, much to my dismay during that impromptu meeting when I didn't have a full understanding of what was going to be discussed. The meeting was essentially to, this developer, to demonstrate that rather than working with the community, they went and circumvented the original requests and leveraged the infamous and untested Live Local Act to entitle their property and undermine the board. This meeting was simply to say, nanny, nanny, boo-boo, we have this, and now we're going to come back and act like the community hero. For such an entity to be so flippant about an historic community that was literally created because this community was redlined out of being able to have mortgages to build their own homes, I am worried that any progress forward on this will also result in a flippant behavior. When unexpected things, which naturally occur in such large developments, happen, a flippant position will be then again taken, and so I will not be supporting this item. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
I just want to follow up and say that the August 13th meeting of this year was our second meeting. We met two years ago prior to, when the developer first came to us, and the residents were supportive, as they are now, about this project. As we all know, we've already approved the $10 million for the drainage in this area. This project, once it's advertised and we move forward, is for a walking trail and also will help with the flooding in Progress Village. I know my district, and I'm asking the board members to join me. I'm always at community meetings in my district, particularly Progress Village, to lead the way. With Jake Kramer and Stern Weaver, they could not move forward until we had the second meeting to make sure that the residents understood what was coming on this agenda item for clarity, and the community supports this project. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, and I'll just want to thank the speaker who came to speak to the issue, because we have been hearing, you know, this is for decades anyway, about flooding in communities, and the flooding gets worse when development increases or densities increase. And of course, we've just experienced terrible storm, hurricane, with all kinds of impacts like that. So I just, I know staff will be working, I know we have to really be thinking about this, but I appreciate that the community is getting engaged. I always honestly worry about the future impacts that are not necessarily predictable in terms of this, or that the engineering can't engineer away. They certainly can't engineer everything away, that I understand, but, so I just approach this cautiously, and I think it's good for the neighborhood to be involved, and I hope that this project will be one that, in the future, when finished, will be a benefit that they will have less flooding or less water impacts than they have now.
Commissioner Cameron Tapia.
Yes, so this was new information that I did not know about before, that Commissioner Wostel mentioned. So if this did not go and continue in this direction, what would the plans be if we didn't continue with this?
So Commissioner, to be perfectly frank, the developer does not need the county property to move forward on their project. They are offering an opportunity to have community amenities as a result of using county property. They have been entitled, as Commissioner Wostel indicated, through Live Local. That property was already zoned for multifamily, so they didn't need it for transitioning a commercial or industrial piece of property. They were looking to get, take advantage of the grant funds that the state had available. However, those funds were relatively scarce, and my understanding is they were not successful in their application to get grant funds from the state. So they're looking for this as an opportunity to provide some amenities, certainly if the board feels that there's something that you want to see as a result of this negotiation. We're happy to include that in our conversation with them.
So this is something that the county, you feel that the county really needs, would be a definitely benefit for the county and our community?
That is one of the things that we need to spend time with the developer discussing. We want to make sure this is ironclad as to the amenities that they are proposing. We want to assure not just you as the board, but also the community, to ensure that they are promising what they can actually deliver, and that we have an ironclad agreement to be able to make them deliver those community amenities.
So this is just to continue the discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point?
At this point, yes. We are looking for the board's approval before we spend significant time going through a negotiation process and talking further with the neighborhood. The last thing I would ever want to do is raise the neighborhood's hopes about a project and then not have the board support it and us have to go back to the neighborhood and say, we just didn't have the support for it. And that's why we're bringing it to you today.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wostel.
Mr. Horwiddell, you said that to bring benefits to the community, but this is a significant benefit to the developer, is it not?
So I believe, yes, it is. I believe there are also benefits to developer, and as any type of negotiation, ideally, both benefit relatively equally. So I can't speak to the specific benefit the developer believes they're going to receive, but we can ask them to quantify that and bring that back if they are the selected proposer.
Yeah, just because you better believe this is not out of the goodness of their hearts, particularly in the way that they approached this and reintroduced the item to me.
Okay. And again, as I see it, this is conceptual in nature. It allows staff to advertise, to do their due diligence, get more information on potential amenities. It doesn't lock us in, so I don't see any harm in taking the next step. And I'm not sitting here today, I'm not committing to this, but I do give a lot of deference to district commissioners on items that, you know, that they're involved in, or at least have a better understanding of the issue as a district commissioner. So we'll support moving forward, and then, you know, we'll see what comes back to us. So, okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, I believe. No other comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Wostel voted no.
Thank you for your consideration. All right, thank you. Bonnie.
Thank you. I think we have time to take item B4. This is to approve the first modification on the Construction Management at Risk Agreement. This is for the septic-to-sewer conversion project in Gibsonton, and Lisa Ray will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Lisa Ray. I'm the Director of Water Resources, and I am here today to ask for your approval for the first modification to the Construction Management at Risk Agreement with Rickman Construction of Florida for the construction of Work Package A associated with the Gibsonton Septic-to-Sewer Conversion Project. The Septic-to-Sewer Conversion Project is actually broken up into four different phases. Rickman has been selected to complete section, phases one and two, and this first work package is focused on Phase One. This will involve the construction of the new vacuum pump station, the associated force main to transfer the wastewater over to our existing system, and the installation of receiving vacuum lines within the Phase One area, which is approximately 125 homes. The funding for this is grant-funded through ARPA and through FDP grant funds. There is a small amount of funding also budgeted coming out of our general revenue funds. I recommend approval, and I am here to take any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. This is an excellent project, and it's great that we're finally getting started on it. And I want to point out to the board that the investment that we make in Part One of the project will be leveraged in Part Two, Three, and Four, because the force main and the pumps that are being constructed now are what's going to allow additional homes to be hooked up to the sewer system when Phases Two, Three, and Four take place. So this is really more than just a project, it's an investment in a major piece of infrastructure. So with that, I would like to move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Wostel, Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, and I'll just say, I'm very, very pleased to see this move along. I've been really focused on septic-to-sewer in the urban service area where there are many, many outstanding areas that do not have sewer and wastewater, shockingly so. And it is a huge benefit to the community to have that opportunity, but as well, it allows for, you know, more homes to be put in those places where we already have infrastructure like roads in place and everything else. But also, what I heard for decades now is the inability to put businesses, and we've been hearing about that, for some things that are actually outside the urban service area. Many of you may recall the McDonald's, or the, I think it's Burger King, sorry, that, you know, that they, but they're outside the urban service area, but they've been desperate for services like this. But this is a huge boon, and I really, I see this as one of the first starts. I think I had heard initially that there was something like 80,000 homes without sewer and wastewater in the homes and businesses in the entire area. But I think there's like 25,000 in the urban service area that don't have access right now, and they can't build very densely or necessarily locate their businesses. Is that correct?
I do not have the exact numbers, but those are the order of magnitude, yes.
Right, and I know that when we first started too, we were, we've done significant investment with the, you know, some of the COVID dollars and dedicated to this. And I saw a timetable, I asked once before, going at the rate we were going, how long would it take to get sewer and wastewater to, and I don't know if that was the urban service area or the whole county, but I'm pretty sure it was the urban service area. And there was like an 80-year timetable, because it is a massive, significant investment. So this is great, great news.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Bonnie.
Thank you. We can now go to our first public hearing. This is item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing for the designation of a brownfield area in Ruskin. This is the first public hearing. There will be another on November 13th. Derek Shaver from Economic Development is here to present this item.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Derek Shaver, Economic Development. This is the first of two advertised public hearings for a proposed brownfield designation at 1308 North US Highway 41 in Ruskin. The second public hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, November 13th, at the regularly scheduled BOCC meeting. On July 17th, Catholic Charities Los Villas, Inc. submitted an application to the county requesting us to designate a parcel with approximately 2.36 acres as a brownfield area. Brownfield designations provide certain financial benefits to the developer as they clean up the contaminated site. There's no financial impact to the county on this designation. The applicant plans to create at least five jobs and build an additional 50 affordable housing units on the site, as well as a laundromat and some commercial retail office space. This designation is not related to anything regarding current zoning or future land use. We conducted a community meeting on Monday, September 16th, near the site, and two citizens provided public comment. Both comments were regarding the flooding or drainage on the site of the proposed project and not related to this designation. I, along with the applicant and its representatives and colleagues from the county attorney's office, development services, and affordable housing are available if you have any questions. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? Okay, if not.
Move approval.
No actions required.
Oh, that's right.
No actions required today, so, okay.
Thank you. The next public hearing is item D2. This is to receive public hearing regarding, to discuss whether to arbitrate Tampa Bay Water's environmental resources permit application. And Kevin Moran is here to take us through this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kevin Moran, Hillsborough County Environmental Services Division Director. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public to comment on environmental resource permits being submitted by Tampa Bay Water for two large pipeline projects to be constructed in South Hillsborough County. This public hearing has been properly noticed, and the information has been made available on project-specific webpages. The proposed pipelines are being constructed to better serve existing water resource customers and to provide for growing populations in the southern portion of Hillsborough County. The proposed pipelines will be constructed from Tampa Bay Water's surface water treatment plant located near the corner of Falkenburg and Columbus, extend east and south to two points of connection. The first point of connection is the county's existing Lithia Water Treatment Plant, and the second point of connection is a water treatment plant being constructed near the corner of 672 and Baum Road in South Hillsborough County. These are large diameter pipes, 72 feet, 72 inches, that's me, that's one of me, down to 48 inches in diameter, and they require significant room for construction. Because of that large room they need for construction, they will be, they will need to go through some existing wetlands, and this will require permits from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Tampa Bay Water has completed 60% design documents that show the temporary impacts to the existing wetlands and received permission from their board to submit those permits to the regulatory agencies. Wetland impacts will be mitigated after construction of the pipeline project. As a member of the government, as a member of government of Tampa Bay Water, Hillsborough County may request arbitration if there are objections to the construction of the pipeline projects. Hillsborough County Water Resources Department requests these projects, and staff recommends that the board does not move to arbitrate these environmental resource permits. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? Seeing none, Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just anyone that's listening, this is a hot topic issue, and Commissioner Miller, if you want to put this out, but Tampa Bay Water actually has a website just for this pipeline. It's called thesouthhillsboroughpipeline.com for anybody that wants to visit it. You can see a detailed map, the costs of the investment that are going in, the timeline of when those should be completed. It's extremely informational, and I know that it was a big issue when we first got here, and I will approve to not arbitrate these items.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wostel on not to arbitrate these items, second by Commissioner Cohen. See anyone else in the queue? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Good. Next item.
Commissioners, we have one staff report that I think we could complete before the next time's certain, which is item G1. This is to receive a report regarding the summary of findings from the Ebor City Grocery Store Research, and Ron Barton will present this item as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. On the June 20th BOCC meeting, Commissioner Myers requested that the staff look at preparing information that would be useful in soliciting grocery store into the Ebor City area, and also we expanded that to include the East Tampa area. You have in your material approximately 17-page document in which we prepared economic and demographic data that is pertinent to the specific market area, as well as mapping additional grocery the specific market area, as well as mapping additional grocery stores that are on the fringe of those areas, all information that's useful in discussions with grocers. Just as importantly, we reached out to our partners at the City of Tampa, the Housing Authority, a developer, Darrell Shaw, who's active in the Ebor market, as you know, and spent some time exploring what those entities and what those people are doing. And in fact, they're well downfield. The City of Tampa and their community redevelopment staff have been actively pursuing grocery store opportunities in Ebor and East Tampa. And, and so, and they're also going to be doing an RFI shortly related to fresh food opportunities in underserved markets there. In addition, the Housing Authority has negotiated with a developer a grocery store in the Encore project. So there's evolving and ongoing efforts that are very positive on this conversation. My suggestion is, obviously, we have a full playing field, so we're happy to be on the bench and be called forward should our partners at the city, or the redevelopment agencies, or any of them ask for county assistance. We'll stay in touch with them and keep you posted, and that's my report.
All right, thank you, Ron. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Thank you, Ron, and all the partners who have worked on this project. This is in District 3. I know that the city and the Tampa Housing Authority is taking the lead with this. I'm just going to ask that we bring a report back in 90 days of an update to keep us informed on this, okay?
Very well.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers to receive the report and to direct staff to report back to us within 90 days. There was a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cohen. No other comments? Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do you just have a few minutes before your Item B1? Would you like to waive your rules to hear this Item B1, the annual audit plan?
Sure.
Move for waiver.
Second.
Motion to waive the rules by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item will be Item B1. This is to accept the 2025 Annual Audit Plan. And Melinda Jenzarly from the Internal Auditor's Office is here to present this item.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I am Melinda Jenzarly, Acting County Internal Auditor, and I'm here today to present and request the board to accept the 2025 Annual Audit Plan. I do have a brief presentation for you to provide you with a high-level overview of the process followed to develop the plan. A comprehensive risk assessment and audit planning process was developed to optimize the allocation of resources within the County Internal Auditor's Office across a diverse range of auditable areas within the organizational framework of the Board of County Commissioners. This strategic process was conducted in conformance with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. The methodology of selecting audits, advisory, and other audit services is defined in the County Internal Auditor's 2025 Annual Audit Plan Report. The 2025 Annual Audit Plan is a planning tool for use of resources. As such, it is subject to change throughout the year as the auditable environment changes. The board will be notified of minor changes to the plan. Any material changes to the plan will be presented to the board for input and approval. On September 17th, the County Internal Audit Committee met and was provided a detailed presentation of the planning and risk assessment process performed. They provided input and asked questions. After the meeting, they determined that the Acting County Internal Auditor performed an annual risk assessment based on her own judgment of risks, and after considering input from stakeholders, the commissioners, and internal and external providers of assurance and consulting services. The Audit Committee also determined that the 2025 Annual Audit Plan's resource requirements align with the available resource budget. Therefore, pursuant to Resolution R 20-011, the Audit Committee recommends the Board of County Commissioners to accept the 2025 Annual Audit Plan. And here we have the 2025 Annual Audit Plan that was recommended by the Audit Committee, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have before requesting the board to accept the 2025 Annual Audit Plan.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions or comments? Doc, can we have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Myers to accept the 2025 Audit Plan. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, would you like to waive the rules to hear your Item F1 regarding the county internal auditor's office?
Sure. If you have a motion, motion to waive the rules, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Board members, as you know, with Ms. Kaski's resignation, we need to address the vacancy in the internal auditor position. We've had two searches in the past that were conducted by civil service. We essentially have two options to consider. Either human resources can perform the search, or we can hire an external headhunting firm. Previous vacancies here, the one we've utilized, headhunting firms normally cost in the range of $24,000 to $30,000. I personally am not married to either option. I would lean toward having HR advertise. I don't think we really need to, you know, to spend the money. And so I would suggest, but I'm totally open, whatever the board wants to do, that we have HR advertise, evaluate, and provide the top three candidates to the board within 90 days. That's what I would suggest, but I'm open to whatever the board wants to do. Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, I'm kind of agnostic on it, too. This internal auditor position seems like something that nobody wants to talk about, and I, it's been very difficult for me to ascertain a clear history of this position. MuniCode is an absolute disaster. You can't chronologically find anything easily at this day and age for some reason about it. It was originally, it's no longer doing what it was supposed to be doing, which was helping the commissioners with the budget process. That is the understanding that I have deduced. Happy to get a more clear opinion about that, but it's not doing that anymore. It's, it's nothing about the individuals in this department. They're doing what is currently assigned to them. The previous board in 2020, I haven't yet figured out clearly why they did it. I'm very interested to figure out the answer, but they dissolved the resolution that was in place, and it looks like it's had this huge history of changing this position. And it's one of those things that's morphed far beyond what it was originally supposed to do. I, for instance, wanted to utilize them for analyzing our budget, and I got a clear no. I got a reference from the current acting internal auditor. She said, no, that's, that's not her role. So, I don't know. I think that we need to understand, as we go to the County Charter Review Board, that's happening next year, and have a clear picture of what it's supposed to be doing, what we intend for it to do for us. It's a very unique role. Are we like the only county that has our own internal auditor in the state of Florida?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
That's okay. I think that we are like the only county. That's another unique butterfly that Hillsborough County has, among other things. So I just, whatever we decide, I think that, Mr. Chair, when we, if we're going to advertise, I would like us to first really understand as a board what we want going forward of the county's internal auditor. And I think, I think that that needs to be happen before we have them advertised. That's, that's all I wanted to say. And yeah, I'm really, internal HR is probably perfectly fine.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. This was passed by referendum years ago, wasn't it? Right, I remember that, yeah. So it wasn't even, and, I mean, I think some other things with the role would have to be also, I'm not sure, but I'm just thinking that that could be a big, a big thing to untangle, how it was approved in the past by referendum. At any rate, I think, I'll just say, because Peggy is gone, and I think she's been an excellent auditor over and over again, incredibly responsive and helpful. And, and I think, and auditing isn't something that's like one of these topics that everybody's all over all the time and, and looking at. But it stands out a few things that they were auditing in the past that I think were incredibly helpful in terms of improving a department. And I, what jumps out to me, because I know there were big changes made that were really enhanced safety and effectiveness, which would be the fire department. There was a really rather large audit at some time by our internal audit, one of the years I'd been there. I haven't really noticed any shift in, in what they've been doing. But I just want to thank Peggy, recognize her for her excellent service when she's been here, and also for Melinda with her work in the interim. And I'm all for saving $25,000 and having our HR look at it. So I'll move to have HR be the agency to refer, to refer candidates to us or do the search.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Cohen.
Well, let me, let me say off the bat that I agree with you all, that I think any search could be conducted by the HR department. I don't think, regardless of where we come out on all this, that we need to go the step of hiring an outside headhunter. But I do think that, given the fact that, as Commissioner Kemp pointed out, that this position was formed through a referendum, I think it's not a bad idea, as Commissioner Wostel suggested, that we have a short workshop soon in the future to discuss the evolution of the position and what our expectations of, of the position are. I think that would be very helpful in terms of the replacement of Ms. Kaski. I want to make a couple of comments, though. The first is that I think Ms. Jenzarly's done a really great job in the acting role. And if we have to take a little time to define the position, I'm very confident in her continued stewardship of the department. The second thing is that, you know, a huge part of this is the way that they interact with the clerk's auditor. It's really a symbiotic relationship as to which office audits what functions. And my understanding of it is basically that the way it's evolved is that they're, they really are supposed to give us just a totally hands-off, you know, you know, unencumbered view of how our operations are running without any influence from management or anyone, you know, so that we can really get the information with the bark off, so to speak. So I think that, that's my expectation of what they do, as opposed to what was, I think, Commissioner Wostel said earlier about like, what is more of a budget analyst function. And perhaps when we have our workshop on this, we can discuss the difference between the two, and if there is a desire, you know, to get that type of help, we could, we could discuss it at that time. But I'm going to support the motion to move forward with HR, but I want to say that it's contingent on us having a discussion first, as was suggested, to really hone in on what we think would be best for the position.
Okay, before I call on Commissioner Wostel, I just want to make a couple of comments, because I was here when this was created, and everything Commissioner Wostel said is accurate and correct, and I, and I agree with it. It was originally brought forward, or championed, I should say, by a very, very conservative activist who had an inherent, you know, mistrust of, of county government or county spending. And because of that, the administration at the time was resistant to going this route because they felt it was going to be used as a, as a witch hunt against a department or against, you know, a certain, you know, a certain person. It went through the charter review process, charter review approved, placing on the ballot. It passed. I don't remember the percentage, but I think it passed overwhelmingly. And Commissioner Wostel is right, is that, I guess, it has changed responsibilities or direction through the years. And I'm completely open to amending the responsibilities of, as Commissioner Cohen said, defining or redefining the position. So I'm comfortable in any direction the board wants to go. I just knew that, you know, we had an obligation to move forward with, with filling it. And if we want to define it better or amend the responsibilities prior to that, or if we want to do it concurrently with the search, I'm okay. I know the interim's doing a great job, so it's not like we're any real rush. We don't need to fill it tomorrow or anything. But let's just make sure that we do it right, however we decide we want to move forward. Commissioner Wostel?
Yes, even though it was done by referendum, there's subsequent resolutions. There's been like five changes. So that's where I believe that the, the member is partially incorrect. And it misrepresents that, oh, we just have to do it like this because there's a referendum. No, there's a resolution that's been changed. The previous board, Commissioner Hagan was absent, the other six board members voted. It was in like 2020. Then it was amended before that in 2017. The referendum was in like 2002. So it just, it's frustrating when consistent and constant misrepresentations of what we're dealing with happen. And that's why I keep having to re-cue my mic, and I will continue to clarify when that comes. So it, it doesn't sound like the original motion addresses the issue that we need to, we need to review the requirements of the county internal auditor. So I will make a substitute motion to first analyze and overhaul, review the roles and responsibilities and resolutions that govern the county internal auditor's role to be brought back at a future meeting, and then subsequently advertised through the county's internal HR department.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, which is essentially to bring, have a workshop to discuss or to define the roles and responsibilities and then of the internal auditor, and then subsequent to that, then we will advertise utilizing HR. So we have a motion and a second. No one else in the queue? Please accord your vote on the substitute motion.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, great. Bonnie?
Thank you. We do have one item that was pulled from consent. I'm just looking real quickly if Brenda Brackens is here. Oh, she's right there. And maybe we can do that, because in case people are wanting to watch for that 10:45, I just wanted to get a little closer.
Okay.
Okay. So Item A2, this was pulled from consent by Commissioner Wostel. This is regarding the substantial amendments to the plan year documents.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a requirement for entitlement areas receiving federal funds. We brought our annual action plans to you on August 7th of this year, but it did not include our public service dollars. It included to-be-determined. Since that time, we noticed a critical need with our fire rescue department. So we plan to, we cap the awards to $120,000 per agency, to the top four agencies, so that we can provide funding to our fire rescue for some training opportunities. We also needed this substantial amendment to include two Florida Home Partnership projects. So this is a requirement for us to come to you, to put these items in our annual action plan. We're required to do a substantial amendment. So this is what we're here for today, to ask you to set the public hearing for us. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Sorry, as you know, you know, consent is for supposed to be non-contingentious items. And the administrator has promised me several times to make sure that when we have the summaries of agenda items, that it's going to clearly demonstrate what that item is. I had to dig down to page 30 prior to any briefings and find the, they almost got it by me, not, not this time, that I'm... by me, not this time, that on page 30, there is an organization that I have brought up several times, and I'm being told, well, there's no, there's no backup or information. So I'm going to just read the notarized documents, some of them, just some brief highlights. I'm not going to read the whole document of how they've spent $125,000, and that the reason that they were able to, under their own notarized signature, help zero people after expending that much money, was that they quote, "couldn't find eligible participants, low income NYMMA." They couldn't find low-income participants. That they hired a contractor who was not qualified to execute the program. That they hired personnel that needed to get acclimated to do the program. These are all self-submitted documents, things that I believe make this an absolute mismanagement of taxpayers' dollars, whether it's property, state, or federal taxes. So I want, when this organization is getting money, I don't want it in consent. I do not consent. I want it on the regular item, so I don't have to continue to go through this exercise. I will, the more that they try to bury these in there, the more I will scrutinize this department's items. So I will not be supporting it in its current form. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll defer to the county administrator first.
Bonnie?
Thank you. This is, Commissioner is referring to enterprising Latinas, and the reason this was put on consent, because these items are, is because the board did take action on September 4th to include enterprising Latinas, as well as various others, Friends of Joshua House, Metropolitan Ministries, seniors in service, to be included in this item. So it is appropriate to be on consent. However, this also asks us to schedule a public hearing for the next board meeting, November 13th, where this will be discussed as well. And so this is a routine item. Thank you.
This isn't, this isn't the final vote?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp?
And I'll just respond quickly, that we've gone through this so many times with enterprising Latinas filing an initial report of zero people right after COVID, when it was difficult to hire staff. But as I understand, that grant was executed in every way to serve the number of people that they got paid per person reimbursed. I don't think at that time they even had received any money initially, because they have to do it by pay by service, and the grant was executed well. It was difficult getting started, but that has been addressed over and over and over again. And to bring that up and to pound this really excellent service organization that does so much excellent work in NYMMA, I think is, it really needs to just stop.
All right, can we have a motion? Motion Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote on A2.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda and Wostel voted no.
Okay, Bonnie, thank you. Next item.
Thank you. If you could waive your rules to hear item C1, this is the update on the Hurricane Helene.
All right, can we have a motion to waive the rules?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Commissioner Wostel? Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, Bonnie?
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to give a brief introduction while the next dream team comes to the state, to the podium. We wanted to give you an update and give you some information on our response and recovery operations. As we know, Hurricane Helene delivered the most severe storm impacts our region has seen over a century. The damages in certain areas is severe, especially in those low-lying coastal areas that are vulnerable to storm surge. And due to the substantial long-term impacts, on Monday, I did sign the executive order extending the local state of emergency, and that allows us to take certain actions to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of our community, and it also provides a path for a federal reimbursement of certain expenses. Working with our state and federal partners, we have successfully expedited eligibility for FEMA's individuals and household programs that provide financial aid and direct services to the impacted residents. We've also opened our disaster recovery center, where residents can apply for aid and connect with other federal, state, and local resources, and opened six comfort stations in the hardest-hit areas of the county, including two in the city of Tampa, and you'll hear more about that shortly. Residents can find comprehensive storm recovery resources online at hcfl.gov/stormrecovery. Additionally, we're extending the hours of our five community collection centers and conducting a special debris removal operations for neighborhoods that suffered the worst direct impacts of the storm to help speed them on the path to recovery. We have spent years preparing for an event such as this one, and we immediately implemented our plans with boots on the ground across the county before, during, and after the storm impacts arrived. Hillsborough County employees were fully activated for the storm, nearly 1,000 from all levels of the organization, serving directly in support of the activation in sandbag sites, storm shelters, communications, emergency response, and many other roles. A partial activation does continue during the response and recovery portion. I'm very proud of the work we've done so far, but we do have a long road ahead. The residents in storm-impacted areas will continue to need our assistance to access valuable resources and will remain committed to serving them throughout the recovery process. And I'd like to extend our deepest gratitude to all the county employees for their dedication and for their resilience. Their work truly protected lives and property and reaffirmed the strength and solidarity of our community, and I could not be prouder. We're fortunate to have incredible partners and such a capable team, and their efforts during this crisis deserve our utmost gratitude. And I want to thank you, Board, for your concerns and for helping us to disseminate information. You care not only about our community, but about our county staff, and your compassion means so much. And so now I'll introduce Chief Dougherty and then Emergency Management Director Tim Dudley, and also are going to speak as well? Okay, from the sheriff's office, Tommy St. John, he'll give us a brief presentation. And I want to thank all of you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Bonnie. So my name is Jason Dougherty, I'm our fire chief. So good morning, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to brief you today. I'm going to do my best to read from my script and not go off script because, but I think it's important that you speak from the heart when you are challenged with a situation like we were challenged as a county. And I can tell you, almost a year ago, when I was appointed into this position, one thing that I was greatly concerned about was, it's the citizens and it's the folks that respond to the citizens, and that this storm brought all that to a reality. And we're going to briefly update you on what we've done as a county, what we've done as emergency management, what we've done with fire rescue, and what we've done with the sheriff's office to help our citizens out. So with that, I want to first start by extending my deepest thanks to all of our internal and external partners for your dedication during the planning, response, and now recovery from Hurricane Helene. I'm incredibly proud to be a part of this Hillsborough County team. A special thank you goes out to our county leadership, Bonnie Wise and Greg Horadell, who remained with us in emergency operations center throughout the entire storm. Our very own county administrator, Bonnie Wise, was side by side for over 48 continuous hours during the peak of the storm. Your leadership has been invaluable, and we thank you. To all of you, our county commissioners, thank you all for your unwavering support. You checked in with us consistently throughout the storm to ensure that the citizens were well-prepared for the upcoming storm and what we were going to face. Your involvement, each of you, was critical to our success. I would also like to express my heartfelt appreciation to our executive team, our directors, and our external partners for the incredible collaboration and teamwork that went forth that day. Your commitment helped ensure the safety and resilience of our community. I have a book here that has all of our executive staff, all of our directors, and I wish I had the time to go by and thank each and every one of them, because every one of them played a part, every county employee played a part in what we did that day. But I do want to take a moment to commend our emergency management team led by Tim Dudley. They did an incredible job throughout this process. They're still working. The EOC is still activated, and they continue with their recovery projects. Sheriff Cronster, represented by Chief Deputy St. John today, were incredible throughout the whole process as well. And then I also want to commend the men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue for their exceptional response. Because of all collaboratively, all their hard work, our community is safer and stronger. As a son of a coach, I've learned over the years, while creating the perfect game plan is rare, executing the perfectly, the perfect game plan is even rarer. Yet I believe Hillsborough County, as a team, we came very close to doing that. While I will always believe that there's room for improvement, I can confidently say our community is in capable hands, and we will continue to deliver exceptional service in response to our citizens. So I want to just make sure we thank everybody for their exceptional response and dedication of service. With that, I'll bring Tim Dudley up to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Bonnie, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here today to give a brief overview of our response and recovery efforts. This is just a snapshot, not all-inclusive. As you know, this is complex, a lot of tasks going on, and we won't be able to squeeze it in, but I'll hit what I think is the most important areas we need to take a look at. So Hurricane Helene departed this area about six days ago Friday, and if you all are watching the news, it still left a path of destruction leaving Tampa Bay and has impacted six states, and the death toll continues to rise. This storm passed 100 to 150 miles west of the Tampa Bay area. The National Weather Service predicted this to be life-threatening surge, record flooding on the Alify 301. And this storm was predicted to have a tropical wind field of 350 miles from the center and hurricane-force winds 60 miles from the center. The impacts were expected to be overnight, so we pushed the message to let folks know, do not wait. You do not want to wake up to these type of hazards in the middle of the night. Unfortunately, the medical examiner has reported we have one confirmed death that's related to Hurricane Helene for Hillsborough County. National Weather Service was spot on. They predicted the Alify 301 to set a record at seven feet, gauges recorded at 9.37 feet. And at the East Bay, Old Port, Tampa, it hit 6.8 feet, a previous record of 4.18 feet after Hurricane Adalia. And at East Bay, they've recorded 7.2 feet, a previous record during Adalia at 4.56 feet. National Weather Service is an incredible team. They've made tremendous strides and being very exact in their predictions. If they're giving us the hazards and they're telling us it's life-threatening, we have to take that seriously and make sure our citizens are aware of that and move on. As you see listed here, some of our heaviest-hit areas, this is where we're focusing all of our efforts. As mentioned, we're currently still operating at a Level 2, assessing all the unmet needs and responding accordingly as our citizens need it in the hard-hit areas. With the extension of the seven days, I appreciate this leadership, giving us that latitude to ensure that we stay flexible and receive all the resources that, so that we can deploy those quickly. Just to note, the evacuation order has been lifted as of September 27th. In our preparedness efforts, we start tracking this storm and begin making efforts before we get into the dangerous impact. I'd like to thank all the community departments and also our partners outside of it. Department of Health successfully coordinated the evacuation of the six healthcare facilities, no fatalities there, ensured they all made it out safely, and that they all returned safely as well. Our transportation partners, HART, the school district, and Sunshine Line provide transportation for our most vulnerable to our special needs shelters, which is also ran by our Department of Health. I'll stop there, and the fire chief will discuss the response that came in during that 11th hour to the early morning.
Thank you, Tim. So before I go into the data of what happened that night, I want to share with you that the work performed that night was unlike anything I've ever witnessed in my 25 years in the fire service. I've been involved in countless storms and emergencies, high-profile events, Super Bowls, RNCs, a litany of natural disasters, have gone deployed on other missions as well, but I've never seen anything like that night where the entire system became overwhelmed like it did Thursday night. As the saying goes, we experience the calm before the storm. Once it hit, everything changed. For about three and a half hours, every Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Unit was on an emergency call. To put that in perspective, 47 stations with every unit was on an emergency alarm. We're all engaged at one time. As our emergency dispatch center continued to take calls, handling, an outstanding job of handling the calls. At that point, we held over 200 calls while everybody was on an alarm. It's unprecedented for Hillsborough County Fire Rescue to ever hold a call. In order to hold a call, that means we have no units available. We had 200 calls in holding as we were still answering alarms. I'm truly grateful for the efforts of the men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. Their dedication under such intense pressure was nothing short of heroic. So we look at the response. We had, we brought in extra staffing to 18 of our stations that were in flood-prone areas, so we had overtime folks coming in, all volunteered to come in to help with the response efforts before the preparation of the storm. We had eight tactical search and rescue teams, those are called T-SAR teams, they're made up of law enforcement, public works, and Hillsborough County Fire Rescue folks. They're strategically placed throughout the county, and they are there to do search and rescues and clear road debris and what have you as emergencies come in. We also had 12 rapid need assessment teams. What those folks are, are life, fire, safety inspectors, and they were out in the road at 4:30 that morning, making sure Hillsborough County, or Hillsborough County was safe and for the citizens to reengage and make sure our roadways were safe. We also had six water rescue teams deployed throughout the event. We rescued over 500 victims, 500 folks during the emergency. That's an incredible number. And Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, I believe they're close to the same number. I'll let Deputy, Chief Deputy St. John speak about that. But an incredible 500 rescues went on, and this was all during a seven-and-a-half-hour timeframe, eight-hour timeframe. To put in perspective, we had 256 calls during that time. During that typical time, from 11 o'clock to 7 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night to 7 o'clock in the morning, we typically would have about 50 calls. We had 256, and they're all profile, high-profile calls. We had over 40 responses to reports of fires. We had six working fires going on. To put that in perspective, on a normal day, we may have one working fire a day. We had six working fires going on at that time. The total system was taxed. As you can see, we went to sinking vehicles, vehicle fires, motor vehicle accidents, a litany of calls. With that, the system, we did suffer some damage. We had one of our ladder trucks, two of our engines, two of our brush trucks, and one of our ambulances received water damage trying to respond to calls. There were three fires that we were trying to respond to. We could see the fire, but unfortunately, the power was out. We could not see the depth of the water, and our apparatuses got overcame by the water. So we're trying to recover from that as well. And also Station 31, which is over on the west side of the county, it received about four feet of water damage. We had evacuated that station with the anticipation of possibly having that challenge, but we're working on correcting that, and we hope to get back in the station in the next four to five weeks. Some other things that Fire Rescue did, we have our USAR team made up of Tampa and Hillsborough County. We responded to Pinellas County and also Bradenton. They covered over 150 miles of search, cleared over 5,000 homes. They were on a four-day deployment with that. We also have a peer support team made up of firefighters that deployed to Charlotte County. Six of our folks went down there to help with the impacts they were experiencing. Currently today, we have fire safety inspector teams, strike teams, that are going to be deployed to Pinellas County to look at the single-family dwellings. deployed to Pinellas County to look at the single-family dwellings, to make sure that it's okay to power back up those structures without having a fire. So that's something new the state's doing. We had a Mark IV unit, which is our communication vehicle basically, that deployed all over the Region 4 area, which is from Manatee to Pasco County, to set up satellite and communication links. And we also had one of our folks that guy tasked with sitting with the incident support team in the state, acting as the Chief of Operations to help deploy USAR teams. So we had a litany of stuff going on, incredible work by our folks. And the, I want to close by this, I want to thank Tim Pearson and the IFF and our union for stepping up to assist 20 of our firefighters who were tragically lost their homes during the storm. Many of these firefighters were on duty, serving our community, while their own families and homes were facing the heartbreaking loss of everything they had. To all of our citizens who are affected, we are here for you and as we continue our recovery efforts. Finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge the residents and responders in North Carolina who are currently dealing with tremendous devastation. Our thoughts were with them as they navigate their own rescue and recovery efforts and there's probably a good opportunity, we'll be sending a mission to North Carolina as well to help them out. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy, Chief Deputy St. John.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning. I'm Tom St. John, Chief Deputy Support Operations of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. On behalf of Sheriff Chad Cronister, I want to say thank you to our County Administrator Bonnie Wise for your leadership during this, this hurricane. Also, I want to express our gratitude to the Board of County Commissioners for your continued support and commitment to your Sheriff's Office. This partnership provides the necessary assets and resources needed for HSO to respond effectively and efficiently to events like Hurricane Helene. And I'd also like to send a big thank you to our, our partners at Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. They were there with us side-by-side as we went house-to-house, saving lives. In the weeks before Hurricane Helene's landfall, the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office dedicated countless hours to preparing for what we knew would be a dangerous storm. Every division within the Sheriff's Office worked tirelessly around the clock, positioning resources and personnel to respond at a moment's notice. We know that town and country and our residents in South County typically feel the largest impacts of flood events, so we had many of our resources staged in those locations, ready to help wherever needed. Historically, unfortunately, I think, many of our, are, have chosen to ride out the storms in their homes without major issues. Hurricane Helene quickly became a crisis that many did not expect. As the storm surge rose, residents found themselves in life-threatening situations. Despite the risk to their own lives, our deputies jumped into action, responding to the hardest-hit neighborhoods, committed to rescue efforts for hours on end, ensuring the safety of our residents. By Friday, areas like Dana Shores and Town and Country are overwhelmed by flooding, with storm surges reaching up to eight feet, affecting homes, businesses, and entire communities. Over a span of 29 hours, from 5:00 PM on Thursday to 10:00 PM on Friday, more than 1,500 deputies logged on to assist with emergency response. In total, the Sheriff's Office rescued over 400 individuals, including elderly residents, children, even babies, and family pets trapped by the rising waters. Our teams utilized every available resource. Airboats and John boats were critical in navigating the flooded streets. Our SHIRP ATV all-terrain amphibious vehicles also proved invaluable in dealing with the extreme off-road conditions that Helene presented. Our communications center was inundated with calls for service throughout the storm. In just a 48-hour window from Thursday to Friday, during the height of Hurricane Helene, our communications call center handled over 10,250 calls, ranging from 911 emergencies to non-emergency and water-related issues. The sheer magnitude of the call volume speaks to the scale of a storm. Our communications personnel did an exceptional job managing these calls, keeping operations running smoothly despite the overwhelming circumstances. In the days immediately following the storm, we deployed additional resources to enhance patrol activities through the hardest-hit areas to ensure those areas didn't fall victim to criminal behavior. And those efforts continue as we speak today. They're still out there doing that. Sheriff Cronister and the entire command staff could not be prouder of the dedication, bravery, and commitment demonstrated by our entire team at the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office. We're honored to serve and protect Hillsborough County, especially during such challenging times. Thank you once again for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you, gentlemen. So the response, as the County Administrator mentioned, we do have the six comfort stations and we have quite a bit going on for the response. We have several types of teams spread throughout Hillsborough County to make sure that we can meet the needs of all our citizens. We have FEMA Disaster Survivor Assistance Teams. These are the teams that you've been seeing on TV with the FEMA vest on, going door-to-door to assist folks to register, as we are now declared for individual assistance, so they can get that immediate relief that they may need. We also have the Florida Division of Emergency Management sent down human needs assessment teams. They're working throughout the county as well, making sure that we don't miss anybody. We have community emergency response teams that we've activated. We have self-reporting tools that we started using back in Debbie, which allows citizens to go on our Hillsborough County Stay Safe page, recovery page. They, it asks, what are your damages and what are your unmet needs? We process those sheets by taking a look at which section is going to manage that. And for the unmet needs, whether it's food, water, shelter, we do personal calls. So those, those cert teams are calling each individuals that report in and we get them whatever services they need in the right direction or we provide that support. And we take that same information, provide it to FEMA, and they know which areas are hardest-hit and where the most need is. We also have Hillsborough County Recovery Assessment Teams, and these teams consist of, we've been working with the Chief of Human Services Call Harnesses Team, with the Human Service and Agent Services Team. They've been canvassing the area as well, looking for unmet needs, and they were vital in helping us do the community feeding that we've started right now that's going on at the comfort stations. We also have been working with the Assistant County Administrator Cheryl Howe and Affordable Housing Team. They've been out yesterday canvassing the area, taking a look at what the assessment is and what it's going to look like for the need for housing, transitional housing. That's going to be most critical. We have a lot of structures and folks are going to need somewhere to go. And we'll take that information and coordinate efforts with the Florida Division of Emergency Management as well as FEMA, FEMA, and see what type of sheltering that we can provide. We've also been working with Assistant County Administrator Dexter Barge, who has the overall task with his teams to do the countywide assessments and impacts. The comfort stations as well, I wanted to mention some of the services that's going on out there right now. We have Red Cross Feeding, as well as Feeding Tampa Bay that's feeding out at these comfort stations. They offer laundry showers, cooling stations, water, ice, MREs, cleaning supply, and hygiene kits. And we have other partners bringing other resources out there. So they get an opportunity to have a hot meal, wash some laundry, take a shower, and we also send them off with some resources to continue the recovery effort. And we'll continue to replenish those sites until they're, they're no longer needed. This slide is not all-inclusive, but just a few of the partners we wanted to say thank you to that's in the immediate response right now. We'll be calling on our other community partners as we continue to get into any additional assistance needed as well. Communications, been working with Chief of Communications Administration Leana Lopez and her team. They've been at the EOC throughout, and I just wanted to point out here, the 228 total broadcasts, that number here is reported, that's something we see in six months. We saw that in seven days. We have 1.2 million folks visiting our social media platform, receiving all the information that we're putting out. We're putting out information where folks can get anything they need or contact us for assistance daily. And point out as well, over 400,000 active users going into our Stay Safe page and recovery information, looking for that critical information, showing that we're a trusted site for information in Hillsborough County. The recovery efforts, we have been declared for individual assistance. What does that mean for our citizens? That means that they can work with FEMA and start getting some of those initial funds, the transitional housing for up to 14 days. And these are folks who either didn't have any insurance, underinsured, but don't let that stop you. Anybody that's been impacted, please register for the FEMA. And we also bid, declare for public assistance, category A and B, which is removal of debris and protective measures. For the folks that need assistance registering with FEMA, you can do that a couple of ways. You can go to disasterassistance.gov, or you can call 800-621-3362. Or you can, or a FEMA Disaster Assistance Advisor Team will come door-to-door. And we have the DRC, which is currently operating now out at HCC region. And once we can finish up a couple logistics items, that Disaster Resource Center will rotate in multiple locations that we've pre-identified. We're just locking in the logistics and we'll publish that schedule as they make their way throughout the county. We have submitted for another Disaster Recovery Center to FDEM. As you can tell, FEMA's pretty strapped, trying to handle six states, but we're going to put that request in. But what we can get, they can continue to plus up on the Survivor Assistant Teams that we put out in that space. So it's several ways to get registered. Additionally, we work with the Sheriff's Office and we have state law enforcement teams in the area to ensure for any fraudulent activity that may be going on. So they're moving throughout the impacted areas as well. And I also wanted to point out that we're working Hurricane Helene as well as Hurricane Debbie. We were just ramping up and getting assistance for folks for Hurricane Debbie. So the FEMA teams will be processing folks that were impacted by both of those areas. Real quick update on critical facilities and utilities, we have nine pump stations without power. Pump stations are on backup diesel pumps and currently no impact to the community. We have four county facilities that's offline. Transportation, we're still working with HART, Sunshine Line, as well as the school district for recovery operations. Some of the folks don't have transportation to get to the comfort stations. So they can still reach out to us and we'll help them get to where they need to for assistance. Power outages, those who are able to receive power, that, that's, that has been restored. So we're kind of back to a steady state where we see some normal outages. They are aware of the impacted areas of destroyed structures, but everybody else that can receive power has received that. And we have about seven parks, boat ramps, and nature preserves that are still offline. Residential and business damage assessment is still ongoing. We had about 170 businesses registered just for damage. We ask that they continue to do so. And we also have self-reported for nonprofit churches, business, and agricultural community to push that damage assessment to us as well. Damage assessment is still ongoing. We were able to complete that initial assessment that helped us get that individual assistance to our folks quickly. We're going to continue that process. It's going to be long, it's a lot of structures, but we'll be meeting again today to come up with a comprehensive plan to make sure we can capture the damages that has impacted Hillsborough County. And so debris pickup, we've been working with Assistant County Administrator Kim Bage on the debris pickup. Since Friday, Public Works, Code, and CAM teams have been working to pick up construction and demolition debris. They have 25 pieces of equipment out right now and they picked up over 400 tons of debris. Debris contractors will be brought online by Friday to allow Public Works to transition and focus on yard waste, so that it'll give us more folks on the ground. We ask folks to be patient, just continue doing, doing what you're doing, bringing it out to the curb, and we're coming to get it. We're going to have a map available by Monday and then some potential dates of when we're coming to your area. So the, we want to communicate a little bit more and be more transparent so that folks know when we're coming and how we're coming. And as the Administrator mentioned, for those who are not in the impacted area and have the ability to move debris, the solid waste facilities are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and we have five sites. And also wanted to mention, we have the expedited construction permitting available as well. More information will come out and how folks can access that information. So we mentioned that on Monday and throughout right now, we want you to stack those piles, yard waste, debris, construction debris, and then appliances that will help us and help us move through quickly.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. We've got a number of Commissioners that want to make comments. I just quickly want to make a couple of comments, having been at the EOC each, each day. I can't say enough about the, these gentlemen in front of us and their leadership, as well as Sheriff Cronister. And we also have, you know, Anthony Collins in the back there that was also at the EOC every day. These guys, as we all know, that, that, they're the best of the best. And every day, they were there, working tirelessly, not sleeping, you know, working 24 to 48 hours straight without sleep. And I just got to tell you that I'm comforted, we should all be comforted, our residents should be comforted in knowing that with the leadership we have here and with the men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, they are so experienced and well-prepared for this storm and any storm. And when you go into that EOC and you see all the people there and the computers and the TVs and just working 24/7, outstanding job. I just can't say enough and just thank you very much for everything that you guys, you guys have done and, and all of the, you know, the men and women of the organization has just done a fantastic job. I get chills just, just thinking about it. One other comment regarding the storm debris, totally agree in with targeting the worst-hit areas first. They should get most of the resources initially, but having gone through, you know, many storms through the years, don't forget about the other areas. Just saying, you know, take it to the community collection centers, and that's not acceptable people. I mean, some people will, but most won't. And so whatever we can do to, again, communicate what they need to do, like you just did, as far as putting them out by the curb and addressing those areas as well, because I tell you, residents get frustrated real quickly. We do need to target and address the hardest-hit areas first, but I know all throughout my district, you see it on every road piled up and God willing, we won't get another storm and it just exasperates and just keeps getting, you know, worse and worse. So, but thank you very much for, for, for your leadership. Commissioner Kemp.
Yes. I just want to say that the presentation, the breadth of the presentation and of our services as a county was amazing and sweeping and thank you so much. I also, having spent time this storm and other storms at the Emergency Operations Center, it's one so incredible that we have that resource built during the time that I've been here at the commission. To Chief Dowderty, to Bonnie Wise and Greg Hordell, who have just managed, I think, this, this operation is so sweeping, 1,000 employees, so complex in so many ways from the start, from the evacuations to the opening of the schools. And we, I don't even think we quite got into that and everything that has to be done on the part of the employees of Hillsborough County, that thousand of them that staffed these places, to Tim Dudley, to Sheriff Cronister. I hate to even think about missing, but I mean, that the, the services are just so incredible. And I'll say to Leana Lopez and Brandon and his team, who kept us as Commissioners updated and informed, it was, it was pretty incredible service. And as was pointed out earlier, we had amazing intel like we've never had before, but we also got hit with a storm that we never, I think, have seen the, or at least not in any time with our population like this, the wall of water that hit against us, Pinellas, but also the sweeping amount of damage that, you know, has happened now in the Southwest, North Carolina, as was mentioned, their teams came down here and we need to go up there. It is just- It is just, you know, it's mind-boggling to understand and to think the calls, the help, everything that was going on. Also, actually, I think, I mean, I lost power for 24 hours. I wouldn't, it's not a complaint, it's just acknowledgement, but I think for many, many people, the loss of power is a huge thing. And maybe because there weren't quite as many winds as there was water, but just in terms of people getting power more quickly, more, you know, less people waiting out there because that's when they can clean their homes and do all kinds of things, that was also good. I hope that we can get something to Town and Country, a cooling station, or I can't remember what they're exactly called, but I know you have people walking through there. Amazing, amazing, the pickup, the cleanup. I also went over to, besides the center, I went over to Feeding Tampa Bay, where for the first time ever, they activated in their new building after a hurricane. And they were doing, just starting out with amazing services, service lots of cars coming through there for cleaning supplies, pet foods, water, ready-to-eat meals for people that didn't have electric, but also serving hot meals in a cafeteria for hundreds, hundreds of people, like in day one. So we have, I think, I just applaud all the efforts everywhere that were done, and I think we can be proud of the work and the amazing services that were done in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Coine.
Thank you very much. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I have to say that I have never seen anything like the effort that was made this past week. Our first responders, from the Sheriff's Office to Hillsborough County Fire Rescue to outstanding county administrator Bonnie Wise and her entire staff, Chief Doherty, Sheriff Cronister, Mr. St. John, everybody, Mr. Dudley, it was masterful. You didn't give yourselves enough credit tonight, just now. There were over 1,000 people rescued during this storm by either Sheriff's deputies or Hillsborough County Fire Rescue or the city of Tampa. There were, every hand was on deck for this thing. And it showed in just the phenomenal, the phenomenal effort that was made. And what I think is so important now is that we make sure that we continue to help people as they recover. And I wanted to just make a couple of comments about where we are now. I know that Representative Castor was in touch with some of us about working hard to get a Disaster Recovery Center up and running in Town and Country. And I know that all of us can be working on that because apparently the state makes those decisions as well. So we really can push for that at all different levels. But, you know, a lot of us have been out there. There are some neighborhoods that are really, really devastated, particularly Dana Shores and Town and Country and Baycrest and that whole area. And they really are going to need a lot of help in the days to come. I wanted to particularly mention TECO. I was out looking at damage the morning after the storm and I ran into Archie Collins, the CEO of TECO himself, driving around, personally supervising the effort to try to get power restored as quickly as possible. I mean, in real time, he was actively working it on his phone. And I thought that this particular storm, while it's true that it wasn't as much of a wind and rain event, we did have a huge amount of people that lost power and the restoration took place very, very quickly. And I think that we saw real progress in this storm compared to what we had seen in the past. The final thing I wanted to ask is just to go back for a moment to where people can get resources now. We glossed over the numbers quickly, but there are still people that need help this moment. Who can they call and what website can they go to? Let's tell them again. And also, let's just take this opportunity to remind everybody that our offices are open and that we are here to help. I know all of us have been fielding calls and directing people as best we can. And in some of our offices, that also includes Spanish language services. But I just want to encourage people that if you're feeling frustrated, you can also reach out to us individually in our offices and we will do what we can to put you in touch with the right resources. But again, phone numbers, emails, and I do have one last question, and that is where people who feel like they need emotional and mental health support might be able to turn at this moment?
All right. So to go back over where you could get, register for FEMA, disastersistance.gov. You can also go to the Hillsborough County Stay Safe page where you can find all the recovery resources. You can also call HC Storm, that's the county call center, HC Storm, and they can help direct you to resources. You can also call 800-621-3362. This is FEMA registration. And you can also visit the Disaster Recovery Center that's currently open at HCC Regent. And you also mentioned mental health assistance. We would also steer folks to our Hillsborough County Stay Safe page to get that resource as well.
I'm sorry, I think, I think that phone number for HC Storm is 833-HCSTORM, I believe.
Okay.
And we'll be sure to get all that information to your offices so you have them easily.
And I do believe the Crisis Center is also fielding calls and that 411 number is active for people as well.
Correct. Yes, sir. And they'll be able to find that information as well on the Stay Safe page.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wuster.
Thank you. I'm not going to reiterate everything. So Chief St. John, I was, I was able to run down to your promotion ceremony. Since you're here, I wanted to, you know, there was some sadness last week, that was a happy moment last night, beautiful event. Since I saw her and I've heard she loves attention, if everyone in county center can go congratulate freshly-penned Lieutenant Dominguez, I'm sure that she would appreciate it. I'm really happy and appreciative of all of you guys' work. And I think that, I appreciate Commissioner Hagan advocating for areas outside of the most impact, but I was at an impromptu meeting at Baycrest and, I mean, it's like a disaster zone. If you haven't driven out there, it's really bad. And the worst thing about it is that this is not trees and limbs, these folks, it's all their furniture. So those are the types of items that would be much, much more worse if we did have another event. Limbs, not so much of an impact as the water absorption of all those mattresses and sofas. So if the quicker it's that we can help them, the best, in my opinion. You said that you were working logistically and that you had already had locations picked for recovery centers?
Yes. So these recovery centers, they have to, these sites have to be inspected. So we had already had some inspections in place for Debbie. So now we're trying to shift some of these sites to the hardest-hit areas currently for Helene. So logistically, we got to get those new sites inspected before we can bring them on.
Can you tell us where you're thinking or?
Yes, we're going to be looking at in the city of Tampa, around the DeSoto Park area. Also, Lake Wamama Convention Center, also Feeding Tampa Bay, and then also another location in the Town and Country area.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure they weren't all east. Those are very difficult for folks in Town and Country to get to. So really appreciate all of y'all's efforts and, you know, anything that we can do to help the 20 displaced firefighters, I encourage them to reach out. Thank you.
And those Disaster Recovery Centers, I just wanted to mention, the ones that called out right now, they're not currently open. So we'll have to publish those times as we rotate through those areas and as we get the logistics done. But thank you for asking that. Thank you for the correction on the 833. So we want to get folks 833-HCSTORM.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. I too just want to echo just the incredible gratitude I have to all that led our county through this disaster. It was, I felt like a privilege to watch you all work. We can think we understand what you do on a daily basis, but to see it firsthand was, I don't know, I think my words are failing me, but know that my heart appreciates everything that we did. I also wanted to know, we had lots of first responders that have lost everything. We've also had a tremendous amount of county staff, many who are not here today but have also been out, that are continuing to do their jobs to make sure that the paperwork moves forward. So I want to acknowledge those folks that are showing up to work today and through the next couple of weeks while they're trying to find places to live and rebuild their lives at home as well. So anyways, I just wanted to say thank you. I will never, ever, ever apologize for fully funding our sheriff and our firefighters. And this is why, because to have one death, which was not related to any type of rescue, it was being out on the roads in the middle of the storm, it does not fall short on me that there's a reason why our death toll was so low. And it was because you all were adequately funded with the equipment and the manpower. And I'm always going to make sure I support you on that avenue. So thank you for everything and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Cameron Sapater.
Yes, thank you. Those were great presentations and we're, I'm so very thankful and so proud of all of our law enforcement and first responders. They're just absolutely amazing, the precious hearts to serve in the middle of, you know, such tragedy, but also thinking of their own families at these times and still out, you know, working so hard. I'm so thankful for your hard work and bravery. It's just not enough words to say thank you. Thank you.
I'd sum it up to say, all of the law enforcement and fire and rescue, would you please stand? We need to give you all a round of applause for that. Just come on and stand because we know we have the top three. But thank you to your service to Hillsborough County. I mean, it was yeoman's work, what you all did this past weekend and will continue to do. And you're taking care of your own families while you're taking care of others. Be safe and again, thank you so much.
Okay. Goodbye.
The only other item or, no, or?
Feature items.
Anything else?
Anything, yes.
I'd just like to thank the school district. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention them. The level of service that they provide for the emergency sheltering operations and the feeding and the level of flexibility is phenomenal. So I want to thank them. And also, I wanted to thank the Office of Emergency Management team that's still at the EOC, still grinding. And I wanted to thank the Fire Chief for his support in allowing us to just do what we've been trained to do. Thank you.
Okay. One other thing, I just received a text from my aide regarding Gibson and Buddy Hartwell. If someone can reach out to Buddy, he says Gibson needs some help, so haven't been there, if we can do that. Thank you so much, Steph. And we'll provide you Buddy Hartwell phone number because he is listening to us right now.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Last thing we have on the agenda is future items. Anyone? Okay. Commissioner Miller?
I'll be first. Okay. Thank you. I would like to ask that our direct community infrastructure planning department in coordination with library services, parks and rec, and capital programs, if it's applicable, to prepare a report on the Bethune Park Master Plan. I ask that this report include information on recent public engagement, comprehensive draft plans, and the current funding. Thank you.
Okay. I only just have one.
I do.
Okay, you can.
Thank you very much. Two years ago, the Florida State's Legislature and Governor DeSantis signed into law a new law that established qualifications for soil and water conservation supervisors. Hillsborough County Government largely funds Hillsborough County Soil and Waters Department. And recently, after those new changes, a current soil and water conservation supervisor realized that even though he initially believed he did meet those qualifications, he realized he actually did not. And so he himself had to resign. And as we have new applicants that are going through the process, I would like for county staff to develop a process that can be brought back to the board for review and vote that verifies that those candidates met those qualifications process, whatever that process is, that they met those qualifications. And if they don't, that we have a mechanism in place that would withhold funding the agency until their elected soil and water conservations meet those qualifications. My second item is on August the 21st, the National Toxicology Program, which is overseen by the National Institute of Health, revealed a study that connected introduction levels of fluoride to drinking water to establish low IQs for our children below a certain level. They said that the levels below that, they were simply unable to verify because it's so little, they couldn't conclude if it did or did not lower the IQ of children. Then subsequently, on September the 24th, I believe, a federal judge ruled against the EPA's arguments that, well, the levels were too low for us to determine whether or not it's lowering the IQ, so we want to keep doing it. And the federal judge disagreed and said, no, we're not going to risk lowering the IQ of children unwittingly because you, the EPA, or us, Hillsborough County Government's Water Department, have no idea what other fluoride is being ingested by those children that might unwittingly jump them up to the known levels of lowering their IQ. So I would like to direct county staff to determine the monetary savings that would occur of ending and terminating the addition of fluoride into our water and also analyze not only this August, the 21st, report by the NIH, but also the September 24 ruling from the federal judge against the EPA instructing them to overhaul their fluoride process. That is my second item. My third and final item is very simple. I would just like the parliamentarian to clear up with an email to all of the commissioners of my full ability to bring forward a motion to vacate the chair, as is established under our normal rules of order. Thank you very much.
Okay. Marty, did you get all that? Besides the one he was asking, Rick, but did you get the other?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I just have one, just going to ask for an update on the One Water Project, including the number of MBEs that are working on that particular project. Your staff can bring us the report back at the next meeting, October 16 meeting. Thank you. That's it. Nothing else, we adjourn.[1758.63]